...two on Monday, May eighteenth, we are in the boardroom at one-two-one-two-one West North Avenue. We will begin, please, with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Mrs. Galante?
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Excused.
Mrs. Vee?
Excused.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Excused.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here. Thank you. Our first item, then, will be public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member, members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. If you have something you would like to comment on that is not on tonight's agenda, please step forward to the microphone and give your name and address. Or names and addresses.
Cameron Banks from Wauwatosa West.
Thank you.
Destiny Dyson from Wauwatosa West.
Natalie DeBruin from Wauwatosa West.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would like to start with, um, hi.
Hello.
And, um, there's this letter that we put together for our issue, or what do we have to say? Over the past couple of years, the Black Student Union has been discussing ways we think our school, community could improve for our minority students, all students. One of, one of the issues students have raised over and over is the lack of minority teachers in our school and district. We have helped greet people at the past couple of minority recruitment fairs, which we think is valuable. We should, we would still like to appeal to the School Board to prioritize this issue in hopes that it will trickle down to our schools. We keep hearing about the achievement gap between our white students and black students. An issue the country faces, part of the gap, we believe, is not having people in our schools who understand minority students' culture, embrace it, and even value it.
Sorry. We've done some research, and this sums it up. Solomon's Study discusses what he calls "disconscious racism", which he describes as a phenomenon in which teachers and administrators, those in positions of power, unconsciously implement and perpetuate institutional policies that legitimize assumptions and stereotypes about racialized, sorry, racialized minorities. From Torres Minority Teacher Recruitment and Development, two thousand and four, many of us have personal examples of this happening in TOSA. The National Collaborative also says that students of color tend to have higher academic, personal, and social performance when taught by teachers from their own ethnic groups, two thousand and four, November ninth. Students and teachers are connected. If minority students had more teachers to connect to, form the same ethnic group, they would be more likely to come to school, get engaged, and be successful. Having someone who is able to relate to you would help us know there is someone who cares and understands us easily.
We know there are obstacles to this, but we also know that if our district puts effort into it, it will get done. If there's a way that we can help, please let, please let us know, because we are willing. We trust that you will do what's best for us, and we sincerely ask that you consider this a bigger problem than it already is. And we have copies of our letters, if you'd like.
Thank you. Are the links to your research in there?
No, they're not in the letter, but I'm sure we can send them to you.
Would you do that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah.
When you started, you said, "issue," are you doing this part of your issues assignment for your APP class, or no?
No, this is through the Black Student Union in TOSA West.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Here, she's passing out the letters.
Do Board members have any questions or comments? I would like to thank you very much for being here and for doing the work that you do. And I'm aware of the minority recruitment fair, and I understand that we've done it, what, twice, Dr. Erdl? Three times?
Twice.
Twice, and that we're gaining attendance at that. So, um, we very much appreciate you coming here and speaking.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marina Templeton. I'm from Wauwatosa East High School. I've reached out to a few of you about my issue fair investigation paper. I personally chose the topic of recycling in our school districts. Reduce, reuse, recycle, three terms that have a significant meaning in our community, along with the blue bins that are spread across the stores, schools, and buildings. Recycling has become more important and popular in our society. It is a part of our lifestyle. Although it is important in our society, it is an issue in our school district. I personally know, from Wauwatosa East High School, I have researched out to multiple sources over the past few weeks, and although the head of grounds of our school district states that we have, states that we have a program in place, it is either not effective or not being used at Wauwatosa East High School. The TEAC, which is the TOSA East Environmental Club, at our school has the idea that we do not have a recycling program in place and has tried to change that. Students I have spoken with say that they see the custodians dumping the trash and the recycling into the same bin after school hours. I'm, I'm a concerned student, coming from a family where both of my parents are environmental engineers. I believe that it is important that we adopt a new policy or enforce the one that we apparently have. For example, at Acosta High School, they created a recycling program where they actually included it into the curriculum. As a school, we use tons of paper daily, and I think it is imperative that we have a program set in place and really beneficial for our environment. For more information, I have my whole issue fair investigation paper I could easily email to any of you. Also, I will be presenting on June fourth, if you would like to stop by and listen.
Thank you. I did get your email. I actually offered to come have lunch with you and see what was going on.
Yeah.
I believe you talked to Mrs. Nedashine in the interim. But, um, yes, and I think some of us will be at the issues there, judging. So, um, thank you also for taking the time to come tonight as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other comment on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we have a recognition. Mr. Croner, please.
Thank you. The TOSA West Trojan Players have been awarded the Tommy Award for Outstanding Musical for their production of The Addams Family. The Tommy Award Program is an education initiative that honors and celebrates excellence in musical theater among area high schools. This marks the third year in a row that the Trojan Players have been awarded Outstanding Musical, having won previously for A Chorus Line and Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat.
Thank you. Board members, any comment? Next will be the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No more.
Thank you, Mike Bryan. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any community comment on the consent agenda, please? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante?
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you. We have an action item, Human Resources. Mr. Bowden, please.
Thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve salary increases for the following employee groups effective July first, two thousand and fifteen. The dollar amounts include regular step increases where applicable for the employee group during the two thousand and fifteen-sixteen school year. For administrative assistance, three percent wage increase at a cost of sixty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. For educational assistance, three percent wage increase at a cost of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. For food service employees, one percent wage increase for food service employees at a cost of two thousand, six hundred and three dollars. For select employees, three percent wage increase at a cost of fifty thousand, six hundred and one dollars. For maintenance custodial employees, point seven-four percent wage increase at a cost of eighteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is a two percent nominal increase for workers transitioning to a new pay skill. For teachers, two point two percent wage increase at a cost of six hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars, and removal of health insurance premium contribution at one hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. For administrators, three percent wage increase at a cost of one hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, and ISO move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Dr. Erdl, please.
The, um, the ability to be able to bring this recommendation to the Board this evening, I think it's kind of exciting that we're able to do it. There's been a lot that has gone into it. One of, one of the factors that plays into the ability to bring increases at a time when there's some budget uncertainty, and I know a lot of districts are not looking at, at increases, we feel it's important to make sure that we're continuing to hire the best, retain the best, and this is one of those, those steps we're trying to accomplish with increases. I think they're, they're fair increases. For example, the teachers say two point two percent wage increase. When it, when it plays out and it looks at the actual salary increase for teachers, it's going to range anywhere from, um, from one percent all the way up to approximately ten percent for some people with the new, the new compensation system that was put into place last year. This allows us to continue with that model. And when you look at increments on, on that model, it's actually an increase of two increments. So, level one, and level two teachers, it's a two thousand dollar increase. Level three, twenty-four hundred dollars, and level four is a thousand, and as well as some other adjustments that are made. The removal of the health insurance premium contribution, contribution. Currently, the teachers are the only ones that have a two percent premium co-pay. We know from experience that the, first of all, the idea of through, um, that's been recommended is that all employees have the same premium contribution. So, we felt it was, was better and more important to drop the teachers from two percent to zero percent. There's a lot of misperception about premium co-pay that I know when Act Ten went through, it was everybody was supposed to have a twelve percent that's on the state plan of premium co-pay. And it was really to make people pay for what they're, they're using. We know from being self-insured and the history of how we do self-insurance that premium co-pay does nothing but makes people feel like, since I'm paying for it, I'm going to use it. If we need to control costs with healthcare, we look at, um, we look at deductible increases or changes with the deductible. The reality is our health insurance has come in lower for the past four years, which gives us the ability to give compensation increases. Still with these increases, a lot of employees are, are not back to total compensation levels that, that we were at four years ago, prior to Act Ten. So, while we can celebrate and be excited about this, we still have a ways to go. But I think this keeps us competitive, keeps us in a, in a situation where we're recognizing our employees for the work they're doing. It's not another freeze that we've gone through in other times, and I think it's, it's moderate increases for, for our staff members.
Okay, thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Is there any community comment on this item?
Hi, I'm Will Ulrich, five-twenty-two Pleasantview Street. I'm wondering how you're going to be addressing those teachers who have received master's degrees after two thousand and eleven? Is there any consideration for them?
Those were, it was addressed when, last year, when we went through the initial placement. As far as moving forward, that'll be part of the discussion for level movement. But it was, the compensation was included in last year when we made the change over to the compensation system.
Okay.
If you, well, if you have a question about yours, I'd be happy to talk with you.
I'm Patty Chapman. I'm at Long Philomino School. My address is sixty-five, sixty-three Crestwood Drive. I have a question about the level fours. And, Dr. Erdl, you said ones and twos would get an increase of two thousand, and four is a thousand. If you're a two, and then you make over sixty thousand, you get put into the four automatically. Is that right?
Correct.
Then, and they're only getting, they're getting a thousand less. But my question is, is that kind of cheating the fours that are making more, over sixty thousand, but yet they're still good quality teachers, that they were just in a two, and now you're, they're getting half the pay raise? I know that's been a concern with some of the teachers in my building that are level fours, and they're getting the lowest increase. And those are the teachers that are, have been around for thirty, twenty years or more, and then they're getting the lower increase. So, I just wanted to bring that up and see if there could be something changed about that, because they are good teachers, and they just happen to be in that four because they're making more money. So, that was just a concern, and I know a lot of teachers in my building have voiced that, and other schools, too. So, it seems like they're getting penalized because they've been there longer. Thank you.
Okay, for, just for clarification, it's difficult to discuss this and career ladder model at the same time, correct? As far as this type of question?
Yeah, I mean, the, the career ladder as a whole, that I think what Patty brings up is a, is a whole nother conversation. I think in relationship to the overall increase, what's being recommended is the ability to compensate and make the increases on the career ladder model. I think the movement within the model is something that we've discussed. I know I've discussed with, with her, and we've had a number of discussions with Teachers Association, too, about, about that model, and it's something we're going to continue to work on and, and improve each and every year as we work through it, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you. We have a report from our Teaching and Learning Department on the Elementary Music Review. Mrs. Shum, I believe?
This evening, we have Rhonda Shum, our elementary supervisor, and we have Sheila Feishaw, who is from the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, a professor of music education. And we have Kim Forsleth, who is a music teacher. And she's joined here in the front row by, I think we caught everybody in the front row, by many of her music colleagues at the elementary level as well. So, they have a presentation they're going to prepare, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start this evening with a review of the current state of our music department. And Kim is our contact team leader for music, and she'll share the professional learning, community work that's happened over the past two years. And then Dr. Feishaw will share the audit process and the findings. And behind us are the teachers that present and teach music every day of the week. We're happy that they're here tonight and that they've worked with us on this review. I'd also like to thank Jenny Keats, who's here as the music liaison, the principal liaison for the music department. First, our weekly instructional minutes include SK, who come to music three times a week for twenty-five minutes each. Our grade one through five students come twice a week, either forty-minute periods or thirty-minute periods.
Our current resources are the Share the Music series. Our senior kindergarten curriculum is copyright nineteen ninety-five, and the grades one through five are copyright two thousand.
You can see copies of the music curriculum of the, the student books, and there's a teacher anthology there for you to see.
Our benchmarks fall into four key areas: musicianship, music literacy, music appreciation, and active engagement. And most of the things that we do in music every day go in between at least two of them at the same time. Musicianship is mainly performance. The literacy is the actual reading of the music. The music appreciation is more audience skills, and the active engagement is just being able to perform as an ensemble or a musical team.
Our benchmarks are used to inform our instruction, our assessment, and they guide our department focus and our, all of our work.
We began the process in the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year, looking at our materials. And we noticed right away that our current materials were not entirely relevant anymore. The technology was not there when the series was produced, so we were finding that we had to adapt what our teaching and create lessons that had technology with what we already had. And then we also felt that we needed different resources to support the student mastery of benchmarks.
As you can see, the materials are worn, and Kim can talk through some of the other problems that we're experiencing with the current series.
Yeah, one of, one of the worst series, at least at my school, is Lincoln. The green one that's up there, you can see that the majority of the pages are torn, and some parts are missing, and that's representative of most of them. And a lot of the images within them are not current. They don't represent what the students, what our student population looks like anymore. And a lot of the recordings are out of date. Some of the artists that they portray or styles of music are also not current anymore.
The vocabulary, the cross-curricular connections that are in these series no longer apply, and so the teachers are looking for other ways to make music connect to other curricular areas. We'll look at the timeline of what's happened in the PLC.
We worked hard in the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year to create and implement formative assessments. And through that work, we eventually identified a need for the new materials. And then this year, we aligned what we're currently doing with the national core standards, and saw a lot of overlap with our benchmarks and what we're already doing. And then in twenty, February, two thousand and fifteen, we clarified our needs a little bit more.
We were on the curriculum review cycle to do a review for music, and we were fortunate to secure the help of Dr. Sheila Feishaw. She comes to us with a tremendous musical expertise in music education. She's the area chair for the PEC School of the Arts at the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, and we've been fortunate to work with her. As we look at what we've done with the actual audit, Beth, Aaron Berger, and I met with the music department at the beginning of the year and talked about the process that we would go through for the mini-review. And we gathered from the department some surface needs that they had. And then we moved forward to, to finalize the search for materials and to review materials, and then to go to the Curriculum Council. So, to help you understand the process that the audit took, Dr. Feishaw will go ahead and talk about the process that she used.
One of the components that I felt was most critical was to be able to survey the teachers to find out about their perceptions of their own practice, to begin with. And we were looking for the teacher-related elements, looking at the pedagogical components, the ways that they teach. There are a number of practices that are appropriate to elementary general music, and it was important to find out what they felt their expertise was on that spectrum of practices that are utilized. Looking at the professional development that has happened across the, the group of teachers, and to see where they felt they might have needs for professional development, to look at the current and the supplemental materials that the teachers were using in order to make use of the current pieces, but also the things that they were using to try to supplement that process and to see what that might mean in terms of, of new materials. And then to access the question of musical instruments and the equipment that was available to them across the district. We are also interested in looking particularly at the, at learners, at the children in your district, and what the skills and knowledges were that we were looking for mastery of. And this then took us to a survey, also of the secondary music teachers, to try to look K-12 at what kinds of things the elementary students were going to be doing as they moved up into middle and high school, to make sure there was some vertical alignment happening there as well. Through the, the observations, then, I was looking, again, particularly for the practices, the teaching practice that I saw teachers using, and matching that up with the things that have been said on the surveys. We're looking for the level of student engagement in the, the rooms and how those series materials were being used in particular. The use of technology with the current materials that were in place, how the instruments were being utilized in the teaching practice, what kind of instructional space was available to the teachers. And then looking at what type of assessment practices were being done, because that is one of the components that have been brought up and discussed in the professional learning community as well. In terms of the findings, one of the things, I guess, that I want to begin with is how excited I was to see the level of support that the Board puts behind elementary general music in the district. In terms of staffing, the time allocation, and the way that that has been done to create equity across the buildings and the programs that the teachers are working in, the SMARTboard technology that has been put in, and the training that teachers have received to utilize that, the massive instruments that the music teachers have available to them, and the way that they're engaging children in the music-making process with those instruments. And then the professional learning community structure that has been put in place also to help support ongoing development of the needs of those elementary teachers. I've been out to see a lot of districts, and the level of support that you have provided to elementary music in Wauwatosa is, is really quite outstanding. There were then a few recommendations to move forward, looking at a new resource, one that would help to update the teaching potential of the materials that were being used, particularly as it would support the use of the technology that was available to teachers. Looking at the professional development needs within teachers. We have some expertise within that group of people and, and supporting them to share within the group itself, and also to look at what other areas of support they feel would be beneficial for them. Looking at some collaborative lesson planning and ways some of the current staff are, are more comfortable with the, the technologies, especially if we're looking at new materials that bring more technology in, using the expertise within the group there as well in, in almost pair groupings and such to support that ongoing development. And then to look at those common assessments that the teachers have been working on. This year, it was their intention to begin to bring that information together. They've been using the common assessments, and now it's important to get to look at what the data from those common assessment tells your district about how children are being served and how they're growing musically as they move forward through the grades and towards the middle school level as well.
Once the observations were completed by Dr. Feishaw, we knew it was time to craft a rubric that we could use as we looked at resources. And so, we looked at best practices for music instruction, and we also looked at our inclusive principles. We looked at inclusive principle number nine, which is about flexible learning environments that are designed to meet the needs of all students, because our goal is for every student to be able to master the music benchmarks. We also looked at inclusive principle number ten, where we have ongoing use of data, and we use that data to promote continual improvement of individual teaching and of the music department as a collective group of our program. So, we included those types of things in the rubric also. So, the rubric addressed the inclusive principles, best practices, and also those areas of district need that were identified through the observation and teacher surveys. One thing the teachers brought out right away, that as we looked for a new series, they were interested and wanted to see a series or, or curriculum that had quality vocal and instrumental models. And so, that was another piece that we incorporated into the review rubric. And the rubric was forwarded to you in your, in your PowerPoint. So, the department had completed some preliminary work related to resources prior to this year. So, Kim will talk about the work that the department had done.
We had on our own, a little, researched a few different options, but there weren't very many complete curricula out there. And there were really only two that were really complete, which were By Silver Burdette and The Music Studio by McGraw-Hill.
There are several other companies that are producing materials. There are several other companies that are producing materials. Each of those tend to have a very specific teaching methodology that's at the heart of them and because your teacher base crosses a number of different techniques and such, selection of any one of those to review would have sort of separated your teaching team. So we were looking specifically for materials that would be inclusive of all of the models that are currently being used.
Both of the companies that had potential resources for us to look at are digital companies, digital products. And we want to be clear that a digital program does not mean that students are not making music or using instruments or singing anymore, but it is that the technology is used to facilitate the teaching and the learning of music. So that was important. So we went ahead and we scheduled the sales representatives to come and present for us. They each brought their national representative to demonstrate the resources. So we feel like we had the best people presenting these resources to us. And as we looked at them, we looked at the materials with these questions in mind. One, we asked ourselves, how will this resource help us support all of our students in mastering the benchmarks? A second thing we wanted to know was how will we use this resource to prepare our students for the opportunities they will experience in middle school and high school in music? We wanted to know what the resource would bring to us in Wauwatosa that we didn't already have with the current resource. And we looked for how the resource would build consistency across our schools so that no matter where a child goes to school, they have the same music instruction and have the same opportunities. So we looked at them and these are some of the features of the Silver Burdette materials and Music Studio materials.
So both were digital resources. However, The Music Studio offers a student song anthology. So it is not a textbook. It is just a set of the songs so that the students will all have a copy in their hands so that we can truly develop music literacy in our students. Silver Burdette did not offer that. There also were not any complete lessons created in the Silver Burdette series. They said that some were in progress, but we have not been able to receive any information on that. And Music Studio already had a complete curriculum lined up with spiral curriculum, units, lessons, everything so that we can have equity between our buildings. The Silver Burdette only had class logins. However, The Music Studio will or does allow for portfolios to be created with each student on an individual login so that students would be able to, from a kindergarten level through fifth grade, have all of their progress recorded. Also, a lot of the models in the Silver Burdette were MIDI files or not children singing, so it would not be accurate for our students to try to replicate that. However, The Music Studio did have authentic vocal and instrumental models and also culturally appropriate instrumental models too.
The other piece that was different in these two series is in Music Studio, the formative and the summative assessment components are very clearly laid out and in the Silver Burdette, it's not fully developed at all. So those were major differences in the two programs. So as we talked through our rubric and we evaluated each of the series, we came to consensus and agreed that Music Studio would be the resource that we would like to recommend. It is certainly focused on student experiences and achievement. They have realigned musical content so that it spirals all the way through the grades, which is supportive of student learning. It was easy for teachers to use and for students to access. The content was relevant. The assessment and the data collection feature and the student portfolio met our need for the ongoing data collection and to review how our students are doing, how our program's doing. We looked for the login access, so the home access we thought was a real benefit for our students. And we certainly needed anthologies that would be available and they are available for grades two through five, which is developmentally appropriate. So we are here tonight recommending to the school board to adopt the McGraw-Hill Music Studio SK-5 resource for the 2015-16 school year at the cost of approximately $76,000. That adoption would mean that we would be purchasing an eight-year hybrid license for each teacher, which would bring us these components. It would bring us access to all digital resources for our teachers. It would give us the grade two through five student song anthologies for each building and that would be 25 copies of the book. And you should know that SK and ONE, they do not publish an anthology. So it's not that we're not buying, wouldn't want to buy it, it's just not available because it's developmentally not appropriate. This would also provide us with an online access for 80 students per grade level per teacher so that we could have an individual student login. And professional development is provided by the company for three days across two years of implementation. There are several features of the program that support teachers. The lessons are fully developed, there are cross-curricular connections, and we have a segment of each lesson where they are reaching all learners, which helps teachers know how to differentiate. Every lesson is aligned to the standards in the National Core Arts Standards, which is very nice. There are SMART connections, more than 1,300 interactive songs, which you'll learn what an interactive song is in just a few minutes when we model that for you. And there's a weekly planning template, which is very nice for teachers because in music, kids don't come as first grade, then second grade, then third grade, but they might have first grade, fourth grade, third grade, first grade. And so this part of the program was also a nice feature.
So while we switch over the computer so that Kim can actually show you some of the components, I'd like to tell you just about some of the specific teaching features that also become strong learning features for children. They have an element, they're known as animated listening maps. And in older series books, we used to get overhead transparencies that were kind of a picture map that you could follow as the song was playing. Now they're animated in that they have elements of the music that they help to illustrate for children and there's movement that goes along with them as a way to help visually engage children in the listening process as well. So that was really fast. You got it all up and going, so I'll let you take over since you're ready to go.
So this is the homepage at this point of Our Music Studio and everything is easily accessible through a menu on the left-hand side. A lot of these functions I would love to be able to show you, but because this is a brand-new curriculum that is not officially released until July, they are currently, it's a work in progress in a lot of ways. However, we saw the majority of these things in the presentation with the sales rep, just some of them aren't live yet for us. So for instance, the planners that Rhonda was talking about, we can't see quite yet. However, this is where the assignments would be for students. And this is really, the big part here would be our resources. There's something here called the Music Marketplace that they're still working on and we didn't talk about this earlier, but one of the other benefits of this program is that the company has created partnerships with Hal Leonard, which other than being local, is an extremely huge company in the world of music education. It will allow us to have access to different names in music education and some music that can be used in performances for chorus and different groups like that. There's also a partnership with MTI, which is where a lot of the secondary schools rent their plays and musicals through. And they have said that they're going to provide one per grade level of the junior versions of the shows. It's not clear exactly what that's going to look like yet, but that would provide a lot of opportunities for our students as well. There's a few things I wanted to highlight. One, this is just an example of the second grade glossary section of the book. All of the book or the student anthologies have these glossaries so that students can see what the instruments look like. That's just an example. There's also a series of different indices in the back. There's a piano keyboard, but this shows here all of the different multicultural materials that's just in second grade. It goes by every different culture, country, nationality, all different things. So students can look at it that way. There's some holiday options as well and then it goes on to just an alphabetical. And here's a, this, for instance, second grade has Seussical Junior in it. So that's what second graders would be able to perform from MTI. An example of virtual instruments, this is something that is really going to be beneficial. Right now, I know that I'm using something in Smart Notebook that doesn't have the interactive feature of it. It's just a bunch of rectangles that look sort of like a xylophone. But in this way, it's accurate recordings. I can remove certain notes if I only want some of the notes on there. Or I can change to F-sharp and B-flat for what students can change out. Something else good about this for the literacy component is that students can see where their note that they're playing fits in the music staff. So it's very interactive for the students and it really emphasizes the literacy component. This part here is a three-part look at how students might learn a song. This is a song from the third grade book. It's an example of a folk song from Cuba. And whenever there's a piece that involves a language that may not be the primary language for students, it's always important to have a pronunciation guide. And in this case, they have the always native speakers so that when I hit play, after the little introduction, I'll just go right into her talking. So I can start right here. You can tell that she's a native speaker. And so the students would echo after the native speaker. And let's say they didn't quite get that first one, I can just go click right back and do it again. So it's very interactive for students to see that. Every song also has an interactive song. The way this works is if I hit play, it will highlight and show students either what beat I'm on or what line I'm on for the beginning. With real instruments. And if students were getting it already, this goes along with graduate release of responsibility. If I wanted to make sure that students really got it, I could hit none for the highlighting. Where a lot of the other curricula that are out right now, they give them a lot more hints. They give it to the students more than having them figure it out themselves. So that's one of the great things about this. We're able to change the tempo if we want to make it slower for practice. I can, again, jump to different parts of the song for practice. And something else. There's my performance mix right there. So if I want the kids to sing that to this on a concert, there it is, all I had to do. So that's the interactive and this is what students would see in their anthology. So this is similar to what students would see now in their books. You see the Spanish, the pronunciation, the English. Students can track along, show us exactly where they're reading to build independent musicianship. The last thing that I would like to show you is that interactive listening map that Dr. Bay Shaw was mentioning. This is for Finlandia by Sebelius. And listening maps are always a little bit different and they always emphasize different skills, but you can see just from this map, we have the flag of Finland. We have the different instruments. You can see that there is some music actually written out, which it will track a little bit. You can also see dynamics, tempos. You can see the melodic direction, the highs and lows in the music. And it goes up the hills and different things. And again, if I wanted to highlight a certain part of it, I can also skip ahead and just do it with the audio only to give students a little bit of independence. So just a little bit of an example on this. I'm going to skip ahead down here. Or if I wanted to go down. That's an interactive listening. A shortened version.
Anything else? Okay, wow, very exciting. Board members, Mrs. McPhill.
Ask a couple of questions and just say, what a fantastic journey. It sounds like your staff has, you know, the staff has been on and started back in 2013. Wow, so it's great. I was more, I would like to ask more about the classroom experience and what kinds, in addition to the curriculum, what kinds of supports you might need to make sure that, you know, this can be fully carried out. You know, I know that there are challenges in some of our buildings and I'm sure you probably, I don't know if you uncovered any of that through the audit process, but want to be real upfront with that. And just understanding more, this is the curriculum and it sounds like this would be a, if I understand this eight-year, eight-year hybrid licensing, is that, does that mean we're licensing this for eight years?
It means that for eight years, we have access to all the digital resources that are available. And then we also are, in that license, we're receiving copies of the student song anthologies. And the song anthologies are with us forever.
And the 80 students grade level teacher metric, that's enough?
It's enough. There's sometimes a section or two where we might have a teacher that goes over and I've been working with the company and they have agreed to pay for any students that go over. So if we have a teacher who's teaching, you know, maybe 90 students at the second grade level, they will just cover those additional 10 students and won't charge us. So then our students are all provided with the login.
Great.
Your question is to possible issues. The one that we, I think, identified the most is in many of the classrooms, the location of the SMARTboard is placed in a particular location and the computer that's operating the SMARTboard right now is not always in the most optimum place. And that's one of the things that we're trying to look at is to see if there are ways in those rooms to be able to do any rearranging. One of the other things that is being looked at is the possibility of using iPad to facilitate access to the SMARTboards. So that's one of the issues that we're kind of trying to look at in the issue of space.
And then just another follow-up question. The actual instruments, we have enough instruments for the students for the curriculum? Okay.
Yeah, and we don't need anything, anything additional to actually deliver the curriculum of what we have in our buildings and our rooms is what we need.
Great, thank you.
While other board members ask questions. Mr. Connor?
Thank you. I thank all of you for coming. All the music teachers in the district have a soft spot in my heart. My son got captured by elementary music program and then the orchestra and then electronic music, I think in Mr. Ulrich's class at Longfellow and he's now getting a degree in electronic music production and design. So he really took it to heart and took advantage of every different type of music offering that the district had. I'm also particularly pleased to see that the extent of the rigor that went to the analysis, that was the same as we might see for math or science. And I know you're surprised, you wouldn't expect that, but I'm glad to see that it was so thorough and so complete. And the program looks like it's a really, really good program. You mentioned that the board supports the arts and music and I do, but I think we should really mention that the citizens of Wauwatosa are really, really strongly behind the arts programs and music in the district. I remember several years ago, one cost-saving measure was to eliminate fourth grade orchestra and could start in fifth grade. And that meeting was pretty scary. It was so full of people from the community that wanted to make sure that didn't happen. And it didn't happen. And so I think with the support of the citizens and the planning by the administration. And so I think with the support of the citizens and the planning by the administration over the years to make sure that we can keep everything in the district that we have, I think it's really made it a solid program. And I'm still actually kind of surprised when you read about everything that's going on in education with funding, that Wauwatosa really still has really strong core programs in a lot of different areas and especially in music. So I thank all of you for coming. It looks like a really good program and I'm, I'm glad that we're still able to offer it to all the students.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Bonner.
First of all, I want to thank you for the depth of your research and the quality of this presentation. I would emphasize or piggyback on what Mr. Croner had said, the quality of what you presented today and the depth of connecting to what your teachers are going through and what you're looking forward in, in a new program. I commend you for it. I do have a question though, related to what you're facing today. What would you say, this could be anyone, what's your, what is your greatest challenge that you're facing in terms of teaching music today? Beyond the curric, I mean, you mentioned the curriculum, but just trying to get a sense of what, you know, the day-to-day and what you're, what you're going through in terms of that process of meeting students and...
I'll maybe help you guys out just a little bit for a minute, but I think traveling is always a challenge. I mean, you're in, teaching many different buildings, grade levels, does that lend anything to?
Sheer volume. The volume and the number of students we teach is pretty overwhelming sometimes. That, it's great, it's great that we have that challenge, but there are days when, any given day, when one of us might see two hundred and fifty children in a day. And so part of having accessibility to technology in the way that it's going to help us support the students so that we can do our best job and, and not be frazzled when that thing doesn't work, is one piece of it. But also to know that we don't always have to have the technology and that technology is a piece of what we do. And I know that our district is really strong in emphasizing technology and I love all this technology, but I hope also that we understand that music is about the making of music and that we aren't put in a position to meet the expectations that technology is all that music is.
Thank you. Just to follow up maybe to what you had said, how would you, you know, because we looked at the copyright dates of the, I guess one was nineteen ninety-five and the other was two thousand. How has the teaching of music changed within the last ten years? If you take, I just, just taking the technology out of, I know the digital and I know the technology, but how is the actual instruction or the things you deal with in the class, how has that changed within the last ten years?
I know one of the elements within the district is you have a, a large changing demographic. And the, that's one of the, the elements that, bringing the new materials and some of the courses that are now being offered at the, the middle and high school level are helping to address some of that changing demographic that is happening within, within the district. So the multicultural material, the content that is coming in, the resources, the access to really strong recordings and even to that very strong connection to popular music. One of the things about the digital resource that this new material is, is it will constantly be updated. So as new, as new things become available, it'll be put onto the website and it'll be available through that digital material without, you know, having to purchase a new textbook for it and, and those kinds of things. So it keeps moving along. Some of the process that is teaching elementary general music goes back to the nineteen twenties to nineteen forties, some of the, the pedagogies that, that are being used. And they are still very valid because they are hugely child-centered and developmentally-centered. And so in those ways, becoming more familiar with those areas, and again, you have a wealth of resource right within the, the teachers that you have in the district, just being able to use more of those processes. And as some of the brain research has come into play, those processes have become even more critical because it's there and it's just seeing how the attachment to the kinesthetic process of children and such. So in, in some ways, I think elementary general music has, has had very rich roots and it has been up to date for, you know, for a long time. And it's just the, the way that it's being utilized across the curriculum and the materials that are being presented.
Thank you.
Mrs. McPhill?
Just one more thing. I, I just want to share with you more of a personal reflection because what you're doing today is, is just affecting kids throughout their lives. And I just want to share with you that my two daughters, starting in elementary school, singing and I sees, you know, you know who they are, so you probably remember. But they, but they're singing, picked up their instruments, they're creating relationships with other students, with their, their teachers. And my daughter, who is, who had graduated last year and finished her first year of college, is still singing. So, you know, we felt very strongly as parents to get them started early in piano. And then our educators here in Wauwatosa picked that up and they started playing the band and, and just a phenomenal statistic, and I don't know if you know it, but over fifty percent of the students in the high school are in some music programming. So, I mean, it's a phenomenal statistic that brings much value to, to their lives. And, and I also want to make the comment for all of the younger families out there in the community who, just so that they know how, how important this, this is and, and what we're doing today. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, there's nothing more to add, but as long as we're doing personal things. My son ran into, he's thirty. He was in Beijing Airport, coming home from Tokyo, he was in Beijing Airport for three hours and found him standing next, found himself standing next to a woman that he had gone through six years of orchestra with at Longfellow East. It was kind of hilarious, but it's a small world. And I, I would like to thank everybody particularly for the leadership. Every time we have a curriculum review, Mrs. Ehrenberger and Mrs. Shaw managed to find some really outstanding resource to bring in and I really appreciate that. I know we all do and thank you for your time and energy. And I hope you guys are all excited. I can't wait to come out in here. So we'll do that.
So I just wanted to add like just a couple things here at the end that are not necessarily specific to this, but I, I am really glad that everyone is here tonight to support this and that this team is willing to take on a new challenge because it does have some challenges with technology and some of the, it's gonna be new, so that's gonna have some workforce next year. So Dr. Shaw is gonna stay on with us and do some staff development throughout the year. Next year, we're gonna do, still continue to do some work with her. Our teachers have been very open to learning throughout the whole process. I also wanted to mention that one of the recommendations in the audit was that we look at our high school for some electives, look at digital electric, digital music elective at the high school level. So that's something for us like down the road to consider. She was, I think you were kind of surprised we didn't have that, so I wanted to just mention it. And also, there is a challenge with digital resources that goes beyond just music, but because there is an eight-year, you know, it's eight years. And so there will be parts of this that go away, that's true for any, actually, this is two years more than most digital resources. They're usually about six years. So it's something we have to be really aware of because in eight years, we will have the anthologies, you know, they'll, they'll be with us forever, but we will have to make some probably adjustments to see where things are at that time for how to continue with keeping the live, updated resources. And that's true anytime we do a digital text, so I just wanted to bring those comments forward.
Thank you very much and thank you to everybody. So we will, I assume at our next meeting, have a vote on the resources, so.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any community comment on this report? Okay, seeing none. Superintendent reports, the Wauwatosa Virtual Academy. Dr. Eardle, did you want to start?
Sure. Mr. Mahoney is here this evening to talk about the Virtual Academy and the work that's been going on to this point, just kind of an update of some of the, I don't know if it's transitions or creations that came out of the program where we're at right now. So.
Good evening. Thank you. We were here about a year and a half, two years back and we're going to try to update an earlier presentation that we gave, so there's a kind of a continuity as you're, if you get a chance to connect, look back. There we go. Just a reminder, I know that the board knows a great deal about it, but just a reminder of kind of how it works. Before I go there, I should do some introductions. With me tonight, excuse me, is Amy Harrington and Teresa Shumaluski. And somewhere nearby is Eric Weaver. And you'll hear from all, all of the people we brought forward. There's, there's a lot to talk about and so we've kind of divided the PowerPoint into some pieces here. But just a reminder that tonight we'll talk about the descriptions of students, full-time Wauwatosa students, part-time Wauwatosa students, statewide open enrollment students and NCAP students, which probably is somewhat new to the board from the last time we were here. A reminder that our goal has been that it's of no cost to any of our students. Everything, all the materials, books and supplies and all of that is online. It is teacher-supported in the sense that our, our students can go one-on-one at any time with teachers after nine o'clock or ten o'clock at night. There is tutors available. And also I wanted to talk about later on in the program, you'll see a commitment to success where we've really tried to stress some of the services that we do provide. First reminder is that back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen with Beth's help, Wauwatosa School Board came up with these online course administrative guidelines. Mr. Boden, this would be new for you, but it's a curricular need, is not available in our established curriculum framework and is necessary to maintain the student learning development. A student has a documented or medical health needs. A building-level IEP five oh four, right intervention team has indicated the need to support an academic or behavioral plan. Wauwatosa resident has submitted an open enrollment application to virtual school outside of the district and other extenuating circumstances that require the district office and administrative approval. So if you look at all of that, if you're wondering, the students that are in the Wauwatosa School District, how they would come into the academy, it could be largely, the board has kind of given us those guidelines to review those, those applications. So kind of a overview, our full-time student breakdown, twenty-five percent are Wauwatosa School District students, seventy-five percent of the students are enrolled through an open enrollment. Or sometimes it can be an open enrollment that is a, an exception that goes on throughout the year. Total courses as of April twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, we had a hundred and fifty-six full-time equivalency. And the reason I put that all together here, a little tricky here in the sense that we have full-time students, but we also have part-time students. And if you take all of the part-time students that come, get a class and then leave again, and they're coming in and out at all sorts of times throughout the year, the equivalency essentially is if they have six full-time courses, that would be a full-time student. And typically that, that's what we have in our high school portion. Total full-time students as of a third Friday in January count, again, this number has gone up since then, but I'm trying to give you some hard numbers. We had a hundred and three full-time students as of our third Friday count. We had twenty-nine seniors, twenty-three juniors, twenty-one sophomores, seventeen freshmen, five eighth grade and seven sixth graders, and we had one sixth grader. As of today, we are at a hundred and thirteen full-time students and we have, our part-time keeps fluctuating all the time. An area that you may not be aware of, but we've also taken and expelled students from other districts. At the end of the semester one, enrollment included ten such students who were expelled without services from districts outside of Wauwatosa. And eighty percent of those students demonstrated academic progress by passing and earning credit in two or more courses per their, you know, while they were with us. We're very excited about the fact that when students make mistakes, we've had a positive impact generally in, in trying to help them go on to the next phase of their life. Graduating seniors, we had one last year. We have fourteen students on track to graduate. One thing I haven't figured out in the virtual world is to make it different than the real world, our students still tend to wait to the very end, so we're kind of pushing them there. So when I say fourteen students on track to graduate, I'm saying that with the full confidence that this is going to happen. Several students have been accepted to colleges and universities. One is, I think the further south is University of Louisiana at Baton Rouge and Minnesota and, you know, different state colleges. At this point, I'm gonna let Mrs. Harrington introduce this. I just will say that we sometime have missed some good opportunities when, at times we didn't expect, like when we test our students, we get a chance to bring them in from all over Wisconsin or we go out. And some of the great testimonials, we keep saying, oh, if I had a camera, if I had a, so we, we ended up doing some video of some of those testimonials. We captured a small percentage, but some great stuff, so Amy, do you want to take it away?
I think you did a great job of explaining it. Yes.
Favorite part is how much I can get done in a day. Like I said, you just sit down and you do it. You only stop for lunch, you can get a ton done. I mean, I'm hoping to finish by like April. That is different because you don't have a teacher coming and checking up on you. You need to actually talk to them yourself when you have a problem, but, well, if you have trouble, you should just talk to the teacher, I guess. It's very rewarding because my first day, actually, I was learning something in math and I didn't get it. And no matter how much I read it over or tried it, I just couldn't figure out what they were talking about. So I talked to Mrs. Beth and she told me, oh, I hate the way they teach it there. This is how I do it. And it was so easy. It's like, well, that makes perfect sense. And if I hadn't talked to her, I wouldn't have understood it.
With her dismal school, I, I wouldn't have had the best attitude and like I would not really want to do my work, but now it's pretty fun knowing that I can go at my own pace and do the work when I feel uncomfortable, like doing assignments or the tests and not having to be rushed into it. And I can take my time with the work. So that was, that was nice. Basically, I have, I don't have the greatest of friends, but they're friends, they're close friends. And they, they would distract me in school, so I'd get into trouble a lot and I'd have to call home. My mom had to come pick me up and I get, that probably wasn't the best situation for my mom. So my, so my friends, they just weren't really helping me out, like, because when I'm at home now, I don't have that many distractions or anything like that. It's better now because I have no distractions and I don't have to, I don't have the ability like to talk to my friends in, at my house because they're at school. I'm not saying like I don't ever get to talk to my friends. I get to talk to my friends on the weekend and all that, but it's a better situation for me knowing that I don't have anybody distract me so I can learn properly.
Little disclaimer there.
There's like a lot of people that I don't really want to see anymore and they don't really make me want to go to that school.
Kids not being nice.
Yeah.
Kind of bullying other kids. And so since you sort of stumbled upon like in...
And so, since you sort of stumbled upon like an online learning environment, what are some of your experiences so far this, this year?
Well, I think, well, I have been going ahead of like, the ending dates for the semester, and like, I'm faster at things than, I get things done.
You know, being an advocate of homeschool and alternatives to traditional education, when this came along, we felt, wow, this is phenomenal, we want to do this. And I do know that a lot of the colleges and prep schools, they, they have peremptory slots available for people that were homeschooled, incoming students. So, this is the new wave, they're going to want people that have had an online education, because that's what they're going to now. They're, they're moving the campuses out to the students by having satellite campuses. Many people are saving expense money by not having to travel so much. You can attend additional coursework besides what's offered on campus curriculum by having this ability to do virtual education. So, to me, this just dovetailed right with my philosophy as a parent and what I see in my own education.
My grades improved when I'm on virtual school, and I think that's because I concentrate more, and it's quieter, and kids don't mess with me as much, and I really like learning. So when I get the chance to, like, it's quiet, and I get the chance to do my work, I completed good.
And looking at online school, of course, I did the research because I wanted to see what programs were out there. I looked at many different programs, and I saw that Advanced Academics got very good reviews. One thing that's impressive about it is, if you need a teacher, they're instantly available. I was a little skeptical at first that they really would be online, that they would be at the click of a mouse, that they'd be there to answer the questions, but they really are. Within one or two minutes, you have a teacher on the computer for a live chat. If you call in, you have them instantly available to answer your questions. And they don't just give the kids the answers, they talk with the kids for quite a lengthy time and get them to be able to understand the material and find answers on their own.
One of the areas that is sort of a constant challenge for us in, in the virtual school that we're looking to always improve upon is increasing communication. So, we're able to identify the amount of communication that we've had, and it's primarily via phone, class mail, which is an intranet service, chatting with teachers and discussion boards. So, between beginning of the school year and the end of first semester, we had almost 15,000 communications that were logged with students and parents.
We're always trying to promote and get our name out so that, you know, we can attract a few more students, open enrollment. This is how we did it this year. We've had informational sessions in February through April. That's just to let people know what the virtual school is, what we can offer. And this, we do this at this time because of the open enrollment, when they can open and enroll into our school. We also have produced a new brochure that we are getting printed right now. So, we have a new brochure that we can hand out to people. We're hoping to be able to go to various places and, you know, leave our brochure so that anybody interested would be able to see who we are and get some information. We have news releases that go out to the newspapers. We had three conferences this year that we attended and were exhibitors at. Our big thing that I really liked was our billboard campaign. We had billboards out throughout the city advertising our informational sessions. We had a couple that were just, we didn't have an informational session, so we had just our name out there so that people could see who we are and, you know, when and if they're interested, be able to go on to our website and get some information. We had a sign also out at Tulsa West, along the highway, that said, had our name and about open enrollment. And we had media and posted schedules that were out. Through this, we got 160 applications this year through the open enrollment. That's up from what we had last year, we had 120 last year, this year we have 160. So, we think some of our promotions are working, or hopefully they are. We're, you know, so people are finding out a little bit about us, and that's a good thing. All right, MCAP. Out on County Grounds and Detention Center, we have a program called, which is the Maquis County Accountability Program. And these are students, the students who are put in here are here for a period of five to six months. They are detained in the detention center, so we have to educate them. They come in, we give them a reading and math assessment test. If they are within a sixth grade or above reading level, they can be put into virtual school. Okay, so, they, this is where they get some credit recovery. They can earn as many credits as they possibly can get done in those five to six months with some hard work. We have kids that earn a credit and a half, too. I think I, the most I've had was two and a half credits before they left, which is pretty good for these students. You know, they're students that traditionally didn't go to school, or if they did, they didn't attend class, or they didn't do a whole lot of work. So, for them to see some success and get some credits before they leave is really a good thing. What I had this year, from September through April, when I was putting this together, 17 students were in virtual school. Out of the 22 that we had going through the program this school year, 17 were in virtual school. They took a total of 29 classes so far. Nine of them are still in progress, 16 have been completed successfully. They've earned, most of them have earned As or Bs in their class, a few Cs. I, they, I don't believe there were any Ds in those, so they've been very successful in it. Two classes were withdrawn due to inappropriate internet usage, and two classes were failed. And the reason they were failed, just to put a little spin on this, is because two kids had left the MCAP program before they had finished their class. They can do it outside when they're at home, however, they generally go to another school and don't do it. So, those, that's why those two have been failed. It wasn't because they failed in the class itself, it's because they had left and just did not continue on in the program, or continue on doing their class for one reason or another. Now we have MCAP at the virtual school. We, when these kids leave the MCAP program, they were, we were trying to transition them back into their, another school, and it wasn't always the best situation. So, we decided that we could try to utilize the lab at 2323 North Mayfair Road and get these kids, they open enroll before they leave MCAP, or the detention center, and now they are officially Wauwatosa Virtual Academy students. They are, they have to come to the lab, or they come to the lab from 8:30 till 11:30 in the morning, where I am there with them. And so, they come in, and we're in collaboration here with Running Rebels. This is Eric Weaver from Running Rebels. We kind of work together to make sure that these kids are, are successful still, that they can start to transition, and we start to transition them back into another school. But for right now, they're kind of with us at virtual school, and they're actually, I think, doing pretty well. All the kids, but I'm gonna let you talk about what we do and how we do it.
Okay, so, again, I'm Eric Weaver. I work for Running Rebels Community Organization. I'm responsible for all of their court order programs, as alternatives to incarceration. MCAP is, in its most basic form, it's an alternative to Lincoln Hills. Wauwatosa Virtual Academy offered us tremendous opportunity for the unit, for the youth who are short-term incarcerated, because, one, it allowed us to involve them in an educational resource that they recognize as being, in their minds, a real school. If you talk to most of them, they don't necessarily look at the school that they attend when they're in detention. Is that mostly because when they leave, unless their parents are responsible enough to track down the work that they got, or make sure that they get the credits for it, then they just kind of feel like, I didn't really do much. These young people actually walk out with tangible, it's an unofficial transcript, but they know exactly how many classes they completed. They've had a chance to sit down with Miss C and other teachers to know that the classes that were chosen fit into the direction they were going, that they were classes that they actually needed. They weren't just random courses that they took. But the other thing that it allowed us to do is to make education an integral part of this accountability program. So, the Bs and As that you hear them talking about, that's a standard that we set in the program. And so, when we see young people who have traditionally not attended school regularly, and they, it's not that necessarily unintelligent, maybe for whatever reason, they've fallen into that pattern and they haven't gone. They get homework every day, they're required to get a B or an A, so what we start to see happen is the expectation of themselves academically starts to change. Once we started to see the benefit of that, around the time that we started to discuss the collaboration for trying to find an alternative to moving those young people in to the site at 2323 for those who had done best on the virtual program, we were getting a lot of pushback, and a lot of these young people, because of their previous academic performance, were just being routed to behavior reassignment schools. So, the problem with that is if you take a young person who's completed four or five classes that are B or A range, and then you put them in an environment where there really isn't an academic focus, but people that they are around are also on probation, you're gonna lose a lot of that motivation right away. So, for those who had demonstrated that motivation and the ability to work independently and to accomplish the goals that were set, we transitioned them into that site, and we've seen positive progress as well. One of the young men that came through our program was actually, what was it, how did they put it? He was, what did they say about his grades when he was in there? He was the rate, he, I forgot what they, the award that they kind of recognized was...
The most acceleration that he'd ever experienced, there was some other things to it.
Yeah, he was basically out working everybody else in the program.
He was, he was, just to clarify, there were several months that he outperformed, remember now, we're talking about all the students in Wisconsin. There were a couple of months, he outperformed the other kids in the entire state. So, our network then gave him the award, which, you know, obviously was the coolest thing, to see that happen. Somebody who gets work and reward and really went after it, and that's what we're trying to describe. We don't have a name for it, but that's what happened.
So, we've, we played with it a little bit to see how we could continue to maintain that level of success. We have a few students now who look at it as a transitional placement. But we also have a couple of students who said, you know what, this works for me, I'd like to graduate from here. They're volunteering to take summer school classes at MATC. It's just created a totally different option for young people who normally wouldn't have that option. Sometimes we, we speak all the time about trying to divert young people and how important education is, but the bottom line was that a lot of these young people didn't have educational options, leaving secure detention. And Wauwatosa Virtual Academy has provided that. Now, if I say that six students have used that space consistently, that might not sound like a lot, but keep in mind that the capacity for an MCAP unit is only 12. So, if we get half of that group to volunteer to go sit in a place where there are no girls, there's really not a whole lot of entertainment, they gotta deal with me all day. And, and it's not, and we don't spend a whole lot of time redirecting. We actually sell it, now, we've gotten to the point now, for the students who are doing well with it on the unit, we can actually sell it as a privilege to attend Stool at 2323. So, they're a little bit spoiled, but they also continue to do the work. And that's been, that's been an opportunity that we'd like to continue to have.
I think that one last thing I'd like to add is that they're buying into what I think every parent wants, and that is work and reward, and we see that statewide. A number of kids, some of them fell out of what I call the straight A tree. Other students have, and they haven't found a school to be a good option for them. We have other, other students that, for one reason or another, the traditional setting doesn't work. But what we do seem to see throughout the academy is a work and reward kind of a concept. If you do the work, you can adjust your own schedule as to how fast you want to do it. You can adjust your schedule as to which courses you want to work on, at which time. Mr. Weaver said in an earlier meeting with us that these, the students even with an MCAP, they get a certificate, every time they get a grade, they get that certificate, so it's tangible. This is one more half-credit you have completed for graduation. And we really feel that, you know, we're not throwing gloss at them, we're not throwing things that are not meaningful. That's meaningful, and when they buy into something, something like that, they do the work, so.
That's it?
If I can just add a couple of comments about the MCAP. Part of what the virtual school, this started out, there's so many different success stories that I don't think anybody would have predicted. This is, this is one, that just developed out of the work you guys were all doing. It's a unique collaboration with county, the Running Rebels, the virtual school, and there's a lot of different spinning wheels to make this work, but two different examples. When you go to the, I went to the graduation, and you could see the, the face of the kids that were successful, and you just knew it was gonna mean something. And to see that happen is, is amazing. And then to actually see two of the students introduce Mr. Mahoney at Friends of Education. I felt sorry for him, but, but that was really neat to see. I mean, Mr. Mahoney, a connection with those students, and they, they introduced him. But there's so many different examples, but this is just one of the strongest ones that we, with this partnership, and so, thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
I just, if I could ask a clarifying question or two. Mr. Weaver, what do you actually do then, when you're there?
What do I do? Well...
I mean, you know, you envision these kids online with online teachers, and then we have these three awesome people that are on-site. So, could you just talk a little bit about...
One thing, Mary Jo, just to be jumpy, you're seen also traveling, because not only is Eric handling the situation at 2323, where he's physically there, but he's also at detention center, same thing with Teresa. We go back and forth because we want them to know who we are. I'm at both locations. So, when people say, where are those people, it's either here or there, it's, you know, they're in one of those spots. So, just know that, as he explains this, it just depends to which setting you're talking about.
Okay, well, I'm talking about virtual.
So, the foundation of, of the programs that we run out of Running Rebels are all relationship-based. So, one of the things that, that we do is, each of the young people who comes through the MCAP program is paired with somebody we call an advocate. Now, that advocate will walk them literally through this program for all 365 days that they are ordered to us. They'll be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Now, when a young person is in the secure detention center, they're, they're captive audience, no doubt. We build that relationship, and as Mr. Mahoney says, they start to see all these people, they start to understand, and they start to trust that, and we're all speaking from the same, same perspective. When they make that transition, my office is there, my staff's office is there. The reason being that we want to be able to use the relationship that we have with those young people to support every aspect of their lives as they start to make progress through this program. We are not just involved in school. These are the same people that stop by their homes every day, these are the same people who interact with them in the community. We're responsible for monitoring every domain that these young people are in for the entire time that they're in this program. So, for that purpose, when we're there, quite often it is just our proximity, but that gives us a couple of things. We don't have a referral form, we don't have a behavior disciplinary form, we don't have a suspension, and we don't intend to have any. And we haven't had a need to write one. So, they're in the Milwaukee County Accountability Program, they already know what the consequences are. That's not what we want to focus on. What we want to focus on is if you do the work for yourself, then you'll get something for yourself that will be beneficial to you in the long run. So, I think, as, I move around quite a bit, but I am involved in their lives every step of the way. It's kind of a, MCAP is a, what I like to call a manufactured experience. It is a huge bunch of spinning wheels. It is probably one of the most collaborative efforts in Milwaukee County. We probably have about six standing partners, and that doesn't include all the individuals who pitch in here and there. And part of my job is to make sure that all of those moving parts fit together. So, some days I'm there and I'm interacting, some days I'm just there, and they see me walk by, but we also, they know that any time that we're there, we pay attention to what's going on with them. We talked the other day about a young man... We talked the other day about a young man that we have, where we literally, we plan when we're gonna walk past this kid just for redirection. It's kind of like on a fifteen-minute rotation, it's your turn to walk by and say, hey, keep up the good work, because that might be what that particular young man needs. But we've also got a couple of guys who'll say, I don't want to talk to anybody today, I just want to do my work. So it varies, different students need different things. The thing is that Wauwatosa Virtual Academy fits in for some of those young people and gets them exactly what they need, so. It's, it's been, it's been a flexible option for us, it's been something that we can specifically say speaks to that young person's success. We know that some of them would not have made it that far. One of the biggest problems we had in the program early on was we were literally using, losing young people from the program because they were going to school. Because their biggest problem was at school, they were getting up every day. We had students arguing with parents to go to school, but they couldn't survive the day at school. So that's something totally different. So the fact that we remove a lot of those obstacles means that it also means that they become more independent, they become more goal-focused and goal-oriented. But it also means that they're responsible for what happens to them, and they don't have as many excuses, they don't have as many other people to blame. And I think that's, that's a lesson they all need to learn.
Thank you so much.
They're also a great help to, like me, um, when the kids are having a whole lot of problems and, you know, because there's issues going on at home, I don't know what they are, I'll just go in and say, hey. So-and-so needs a little redirection or something's going on, I'll tell them what the problem is, and they'll pull them aside in the help process to figure out why things aren't going the way they're going, and, you know, try to get them back on track. So, you know, I'm not the one having to deal with it, because I personally don't know what's all going on in their lives, and I don't really need to know, you know, some of their personal things that are going on. They've got all kinds of bigger issues that Running Rebels knows about and can help them deal with. So it's been really great, you know, to have them there for support for, for needs and.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, board members, I just wanted to get that clarification of where you fit in there. Mr. Croner.
Thank you. Um, I'll admit that when we started this school, I wasn't aware of the variety of different kinds of students that the virtual school would serve, and I've come to appreciate. Not in the, just the M cap program, just within our own district and around the state, how beneficial it is for a number of different types of students. I think, hopefully later we'll get a financial picture of what's going on, because it's a solid program, and I'm curious to see how it's working out financially for all the different partners involved, and hopefully that will happen later this summer. Uh, the M cap program is particularly interesting, because it's nice to see something that we're doing in Wauwatosa spill outside the borders of Wauwatosa in a good way. I mean, I know students from outside the state are joining the virtual school, but this is a, a different kind of spilling out that, that is really good, I think. And my question about that program is how, since there are so many different partners, how would it grow? Is it, is Wauwatosa responsible for building the bigger building to get more students in, is it a partnership that would make that happen, or how would that happen?
Phil, um, you know, there's so much to say, but maybe a couple of things. One thing we, we neglected is that a part of this brain trust, the larger part of it actually is Tom Wanta. Over at the, um, County, along with Terrell Park and Wilma Fonseca, they're all involved, the County, to work at this. The current plans, as you know, you've heard, you read, it shifts quite a bit, uh, a number of the things, but the current concept is, what they, what they're discussing now is doubling the size of M cap. Um, this may be a really, uh, bad generalization, but I think it's accurate. The judges were looking for options, and when they came upon this deal, it seemed to make sense. Students were coming in and being dismissed and coming right back, reoffending, and as this worked out, it made sense to say, let's get a hold of them, let's put them into a school, and let's do it long-term. So that was revolutionary, really, because we're not doing the five and ten and fifteen days, they're going in terms of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty days, a hundred and eighty. And so we have a chance really to reconstruct what an educational day, some of our students in and out of M cap, that, that we're looking at are students that hadn't been regular attenders maybe in a couple of years. So it's, it's unique from that perspective, but more to your point, they're thinking of doubling the M cap size maybe as soon as next year. So that at detention center, instead of twelve, it will be twenty-four, and then they're reshuffling the rest of detention center to make this happen. The population discussions are going on all the time. River Hills, uh, and Plank Road fit into those discussions too, as to how those spaces are utilized. I would anticipate, if I looked in the global, in the wall, for M cap, it'll double probably in the next year and a half. Uh, you'll see at least double, and, and who knows from there, because the reality is we can't afford to let students not attend school for two, three, and four years and just keep reoffending and being aimlessly put into a system. I mean, it just doesn't work. And, uh, so that would be my, my answer to the growth and why.
But isn't the second part of the growth them being able, when they leave the program, attend the computer lab or something like that?
For our end, for our end, that's very right, and I'm sorry I missed that, uh, but the predicate part of it is, is that, yes, they then double, our size could then double. Because if we hold fifty percent or more of what's coming out of there, we could very easily double, and Eric actually should talk about that, because he's been in discussions with the implications there.
So some of the side effects that, uh, Phil Erdo spoke on have been, they were kind of unexpected. Uh, M cap has had quite a few of those. The educational impact was, we definitely set out to improve education with the students, certainly, but we didn't foresee all of these different pieces falling together. Uh, they've been a welcome surprise to everybody involved, and many of the people that, uh, we just mentioned, uh, Tom is definitely on board. So as we've been discussing the expansion, we know that the program is going to expand, but as we've been discussing the expansion, right now, M cap is a twelve-month continuum. One of our goals is to make sure, uh, just like anybody else, students do better when they know what to expect. If a young person knows that I can work my way through nine months in the virtual academy, it kind of helps me plan out my twelve months or my eighteen months. So one of the things that we're trying to do is to expand, uh, the continuum for M cap and, and have the students understand where they fit. And make sure that Wauwatosa Virtual Academy, for those who qualify, for those who fit, that that's a component that can be integrated into the program. So with that expansion, not only would we get the hundred and twenty, hundred and fifty day stays, but we're also looking to, uh, potentially do, find a way to keep our transitional phases. In the Wauwatosa area, so that some of those continuums would expand possibly, we're looking at maybe an additional ninety days to the full six months after. So that will have some financial implications. Uh, I'm, I'm not oblivious to the fact that this is a business, but I'm also more interested in the fact that if I've got a young person who's stable and growing holistically. As a result of having an opportunity to be enrolled in Wauwatosa Virtual Academy, and it keeps all of those other obstacles out of their world, then that's what I'm most happy about. So that's the side effect that has me constantly looking at, how can I integrate this into the lives of more of the young people who are taking part in the M cap program? Uh, of course, all of them, all of our students won't have a sixth grade reading level, but the ones that do, uh, when you've got six months to get them focused academically, and you've got a supportive team. And it's something that, as I say, we can build it into their accountability. By the time they get ready to transition to the community, this is what they expect to be doing, more so than it is what we're telling them they have to do. So that's been successful, um, and we want to continue that success. So we're hoping to extend the time that young people have access to Wauwatosa Virtual Academy, and that, that's how we're integrating into the conversations right now.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Button?
Yes, thank you for your presentation today. Just a couple of questions. Who designs the curriculum for the virtual schools? Where does the curriculum?
The, the, um, right now, it's a con, it's kind of a agreement between, uh, what was Advanced Academics and Connections Learning. Is the provider that provides the online, um, courses. And what we did early on, and we need to, uh, work this through probably annually, is look at those courses and how they relate back with the, you know, the goals within Wauwatosa. Our teachers are, are, are Wisconsin certified, we make sure that that happens, but we're looking at, you know, again, when they, because now we're having students that started at West or started at East and then came back to us and then go back there. So we're making sure that these equivalencies are, you know, working their way through. Did that answer it, Brian?
So if, if we have a sixth grade student.
We're not designing those courses.
So the student comes, sixth grade at home or through our court system, whatever, they would then access this program like a sixth grader. And it would match currently close to what the core classes would be experiencing in a sixth grade classroom, is that correct, like the math and?
Yes.
Some electives will be maybe beyond what we offer, for some, sometimes students really look at that too, that the electives may be other than what we offer, but cores would be generally equivalent to what we offer.
So just to follow up, how many teachers are we using to help these students?
Good question.
Cause the, the, the parent in the video was saying, you know, within a minute or two, somebody's there.
There, I'm thinking that we have probably twelve to fifteen that would be on, available at any one time, and then in the evening for tutoring, you know, that could be as many as ten to twenty. I really don't know that, Brian, but the, the DPI certified, those teachers we do know, because those are ones that we have to sign off on for our reports. And I would say, uh, there, we're between twelve to fifteen.
Is this their full-time job, these teachers? And who pays these teachers?
Well, part of your, part of the, part of the, um, part of the cost that we, we actually do make payments to the provider. And though, part of that is part of their, their, um, you know, their, helps with their salary. They have other schools that they're working on, it's not just Wauwatosa, they'll have other schools in different states, so they, you know, they can double up on that as well. Not necessarily those teachers, but some of those could be dual-certified, they might be Wisconsin and Illinois or something that's close to that.
So we contract with them based on the services they provide?
That is correct.
And their expertise, whatever it may be, science or?
Right.
Thank you.
No one else? Um, thank you so much to all of you. Um, it's really important work you do. I'm really glad that these opportunities have expanded the way they have, and, um, I just want to take a moment, Mr. Mahoney, to say goodbye, and, um. We certainly will miss you, um, but I, I'm happy to see Mr. Hoist back there, nodding and excited. Um, he, the whole time he's been nodding his head and like, okay, okay, okay. So, um, but Mr. Mahoney, you, you have been really a gift to, um, to this program and to the many kids, and, um. Welcome, Mr. Weaver, to, to the whole big process that we, that we have begun here.
And he's a Wauwatosa parent too.
I am a Wauwatosa.
You are, excellent, thank you.
My daughter's a Whitman student.
Excellent.
And we are very happy.
Good, 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 good. Well, and thank you to you as well. Um, we just know that you really put your heart into everything that you do there. It's, I mean, every teaching job is like that, but some more so than others, so, thanks.
Can I say about virtual schools is we can keep Mr. Mahoney hanging around for a while, virtually.
Virtually?
We don't have to put up with him, we can just bring him around.
He's in and out, but he's done that for a couple of years.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any community comment on the report? Okay, um, then we have Mrs. Muft, uh, who attended her first Southeast Wisconsin School Alliance meeting, and, um, will give a report on that.
Yes, thank you. It's hard to follow that presentation and that of our music program tonight with this, but, um, very important meeting. Um, I had attended previous S W S A meetings, um, but this, um, meeting that I attended on May twelfth, I thought was very organized. Uh, they had, uh, they had changed their leadership. I did ask Dr. Erdl to forward to the board members some more, uh, background information and materials that would take a great, you know, deal of time to go through this evening, um, for your information. So the outline of the agenda, which I have here and I can also forward to you, was, um, there were probably about, I'm gonna guess, thirty people in the room. Uh, they were varied, um, between, uh, superintendents, board members, uh, teachers actually, and, um. And it, it was, I thought it was very well attended, um, it, for, for that type of a meeting. They gave a legislative update, which, uh, again, I have forwarded to the board, so you can take a look at that. Um, you're, I, I believe you're all up to speed on what has been happening since you probably are getting updates from the W A S B as well. Um, of course, we're advocating, uh, S W S A is advocating as we are and as our resolution that we passed. They have a, uh, budget that they work with, and, um. They, um, had discussed some, uh, some facts of that budget and how it changed. Um, one, I thought one was an interesting project them be following up with, and that was the, um, Hanover Project. Um, it appears that they had some of the school districts, um, they had two amounts budgeted for this project. And one was more of a working, maybe Dr. Erdl can comment on, on it more, but, um, one of them was more of a working number. Where school districts would actually participate in the programming, and they would probably drop that, but that they are going to be, uh, using some additional funds for a research project. And again, I, I have to get more up to speed on that in order to be able to present that, but I just thought that was very interesting. They, um, they're also trying to update their website, and that was an amount that was delayed. Um, so again, I can forward you their financial information if you're interested. Uh, they also went over their reps, their regional, and, um, and where we fall in the regions are, um, you know, are explained there. We're in region two with a lot of the other, um, suburban districts. They gave some, um, again, some project updates with this Hanover Project, which is, um, just kind of in a nutshell. It's a identifying optimal district level metrics and balanced scorecards, and it's a thirteen-month research project. They're looking for interested districts, so that's, that's just really all I have on it, I don't, I don't have any more, but maybe Dr. Erdl can comment.
I think the Hanover research is, you're one of two districts that are, you're either one of the districts that said, we'll just receive the research reports and use what's there, or you're one of the districts that pays. An additional amount, but then you get to dictate in the line of districts, one research project. I think it comes out to about once every three years. We are not one of the ones that paid the extra to get the individual research project, and we're just satisfied getting the projects that they have. And it's actually a good research group and gives us really good information, but that's where that sits.
Okay, good, well, we'll, you know, we'll stay tuned and we'll be updated more about that as we go. Um, we, uh, also, they had a special guest speaker, Attorney General Brad Schimmel came and talked about the, um. Increasing, uh, use of heroin and opiates in our, uh, area. It was quite a thorough presentation, um, and, uh, they do have his slides if you're interested in seeing that. Um, you know, certainly it has increased over the years, and, um, and he did go into, you know, a lot more specific information, but, um. And that was, that was quite a lengthy presentation. The other bits of information that I have forwarded to you on the email link will contain a, uh, the day before. Uh, S W S A representatives were involved in a day with Alan Borzek, you might be familiar with him, um, from his columns. And that was on, um, May eleventh at Marquette. There's, um, some pivotal points, uh, there's also a complete video of that, and it was some, uh, very good talking points for the state budget and what's happening. The impacts, uh, that is happening all over, you know, not only Wauwatosa, but all over southeastern Wisconsin and the state. There was also a, uh, presentation attached there called the Fairly Normal School District, and this is, you know, a, a presentation on, well, what are the? And this is, you know, a, a presentation on, well, what are the implications? So, you know, I, I'm, I'm thinking that Wauwatosa will, in the future, put together some information on, well, what does this mean for us? As it, probably the biggest message that came out of it was, everybody, this is the time to really push your voice, your advocacy voice with your, your representatives, because as everyone knows, probably tomorrow, Wednesday, early in the morning, is when all of the state's K-12 educational policy changes will be made. And there are some very interesting proposals out there. What the Joint Finance Committee will do with them is, we will see, there's a lot of speculation, there's a lot of information circling now, there was an article in, in the paper this morning, which you probably already read. So that is really the summation of SWSA. And, and again, I think that from, from where I have participated in past years, I really do think that they are providing value to the member districts and to Wauwatosa. And they are, I think they're very organized, their leadership now is very good and, and sending out communications. And I will continue to forward those pieces of information, you know, to the board members via Dr. Erdl. Go ahead and forward.
Thank you. Did you want to talk about that forum at Moncada? All right, Dr. Erdl and I did attend that forum. Board presidents were invited, and, and it was good, but, you know, they had several different panels and no representation by elected school boards, which was very interesting, particularly given the push in Milwaukee to kind of take away the board and give the privatization of, of schools. So I thought that was interesting, and I will be contacting the organizers to volunteer somebody from our board to attend the next time they, because it was so many different people and so many different aspects. It was, to me, very noticeably absent to have that voice. So anyway, thank you very much. Is there any community comment on this? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Galante?
Mr. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Meufeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, thank you, we're adjourned.